Recording.
Okay. I'm calling to order the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District regular monthly meeting, Thursday, November 20th, 2014, at 7:05 PM. All five commissioners are present. So, board issues. Any issues? Agenda changes?
I'd like to move that we take the -- move the director's update on the head coach and possible contract to the start of new business instead of where it's at now.
Would you say that one more time, please?
Sure. I would like to move that we move that we take the director's update on head coach and possible contract to the first thing on new business, first item on new business.
Okay.
Jill Anne's here for that, and she's a school-aged young lady, and I think she wants to do it.
Second.
Is that true? Or reject the statement later? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Any other changes to the agenda? We're all okay?
Board issues?
Public comments?
Board issues?
Okay, board issues.
You tell me where you'd like to talk about it. The very first thing I want to actually ask about is the plan of the director being off. The first I heard that he was actually the time he was going to be off was after the regular board meeting last month. I think some of you may have knew, but not all of us knew. It wasn't discussed in a regular board meeting. There was no plan put in place that I know of, no plan that was ever approved by a board for anyone to be a liaison to the senior staff. And frankly, I still don't know who. And I've asked this question on more than one occasion. I do not know who the interim director is while he's off. And if there are decisions being made away from this body, then we're out of line. And it would be in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. If you remember when Bill Walker resigned, when we named the interim -- when we named a liaison to the senior staff, that something was brought before the board, was discussed, was voted on, and we had a plan put in place. And here we've got a director that I still really don't even know how long he's going to be off. I've heard one person say three weeks. The best I've got is, and I got a returned email from him saying December 4th, so I don't know if it's December 4th or not. And this is something we need to discuss. What is the plan when our director is gone? Which opens up a whole caveat of other questions, and they're going to come up. Is he in a pay status? Is he in a non-pay status? These are questions that need to be asked. He's worked for us for six months now. I doubt that he's been able to get that much leave to cover that time. And these are questions that should have came up October 25th, I think it was, at the last regular board meeting. This wasn't an emergency surgery. This was a planned surgery, I would say. And the least that the director could have done was to have put a plan in place to have made the board aware of it. That's the first issue that I would like to bring up.
What's your second?
The second one would be the budget that we passed. When I look at even the budget from today, and I don't know when we want to get into that, we may want to wait till the budget when we discuss it here in a little bit. But the budget for 2015, when you look at that $83,000 N-WAC, you know, that we expect to take that much in revenue and expenditures for the year. If you look at this year, we're sitting around $40,000 in revenue. We've spent over $54,000 in coaches and everything else. We're getting ready to hire a coach. This $80,000, $83,000 that we're looking -- yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I got $83,000 from next year and I have $43,000 so far this year.
It's about $40,000. And we'll look at it here in a minute, but I really think that, you know, I just heard the Island Transit mention just a second ago. Oh my goodness, right? When we look at that budget that we passed, it's not too late to go back and look at a couple of things. But that N-WAC, $83,000, should jump out at us like this beacon because if we're sitting at $40,000 is what we've brought in this year in N-WAC, that's what we've brought in, in N-WAC masters and a swim meet. For us to think that we're going to over-double our revenue in N-WAC, that's hopeful, but it's -- it would be not based on logic at all. And if we get to that place where those numbers increase that much, then we can always go back and adjust the budget. You don't adjust the budget the other way. That would be foolish. It would be like me saying I want a new car because I think I'm going to get a --
You'd say it's foolish. It's unfoolish.
Well, think about it. Would you go buy a car hoping that you were going to get a promotion? Or would you maybe wait till you get that promotion and then buy that car?
Hasn't got anything to do with it.
Sure it does. It's $83,000. You're getting ready to hire a coach. You're going to leave the coaching staff you've got in place, and you're going to base it on the hope that you're going to be able to bring in $83,000 this year.
So what are you suggesting, Steve?
That we go back and that we look at the budget, and we look at it just a little bit better when it gets to some of these issues. Because if we're going to hire a coach, which that's what we're going to do, I want to be wise with the taxpayers' money. Yes?
So my question is, are you suggesting, and I just want to make sure I understand, so you're suggesting we sit down again at a workshop and maybe invite the public again to say, hey, let's take another look?
Yes.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at?
I would like to do it next week, personally. But that would be up to the chair to set up a special meeting, I guess. That's what I would like to do. I would like to make a motion that we set up a special meeting to look at the 2015 budget.
We've approved the 2015 budget. I'm taking a county. So you've got to vote to reevaluate that budget.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor?
No, well, I'm waiting. We're at board issues right now. We're not in matters of business.
That's fine.
Is there any -- are there any more points, or is that --
No, that would be it, sir.
Okay. On the director's absence, the director is still present. The director has not resigned, and so it is not analogous to what happened with Phil Walker. The director's been working with Aaron, who's been in constant contact with him. Matt has taken over because he's auditor for the district, and so he does the counter-signing, so we have the checks and balances in here, so there is no change in personnel. There has not been another director appointed. Because we don't need another director, we have one. The one is absent, but in fact, the administration has been carrying on. And if any issues were to come to the commission, I sat in because you have a conflict with the senior staff at the moment with issues that have gone on around. And so I sat in with the senior staff. We have made no decisions that relate to the director's job, but if things were to come to the commission, and they've managed to hold the place together, so there haven't been. And that's what happened. And I know you've got this structure built up, but the structure is your structure in your mind. The director is still here, the place is still working, and we're still, I can go through the financial return. We saved a lot of money by the staff doing that in our budget over the years. So that's the answer to number one. And if you don't like it, you can get after me, but that's what we did.
Well, can I get after you right now, then?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I think part of what Steve is trying to express is truly that perhaps with some proactive communication, that concern could have been alleviated. Because I have to agree with him in that, you know, we made some agreements in the last meeting that we're going to do this, we're going to do that. I didn't know at that time either. And I think that it just would have been more helpful if it was, here's the plan, communicated to anybody and everybody that needed to know it. And as the body that actually employs the director, it seems like it would actually just be a really smart thing for him to do. I know he's not here to receive that feedback. I would gladly give it to him, but because I think it just was a matter of kind of poof for some of us, for others not. But I think it was a little jarring in that respect, and it was kind of a, how are we going to get some things done? So I just, I think if nothing else, we take away that type of proactive communication, and maybe that wouldn't resolve it for you, where we understand what's happening, what's the timeframe, and what do we do in the interim? How's it going to work? And I think that would have been extremely helpful.
I take your point. Gino's had a bad back for quite a while, and as a result, it seemed to be sort of continuing.
I agree.
And so that can be my fault if you want, or Gino's fault. We certainly saw the thing happening and saw that as him actually getting better rather than being removed from the place. And so it was, you sort of get tied into those when you're pretty busy on this. And we'll see tonight in the executive session just how much has been going on. Yes?
I know that's one of the things we brought up, and we might have this discussion, and I think it would help reaffirm what Steve brought up, a lot of them of the meetings act, and his concern, we discussed this. Is that when you sat in with the senior staff? You didn't make any decisions?
No, I have a preamble that I gave every time because of the problem of division of powers and not being able to make any administrative decisions. And they'd all look at me and say, yes, we understand. I said, I'm here to take things to the commission if things have to go to the commission. Otherwise, have a nice chat. And we kept the meeting really short, huh?
One thing on this. First of all, don't think I'm attacking the senior staff. I think that they do a marvelous job. If you were to remember right, when I was the interim, or the liaison to them, rather, I continually praised the job that they had done, and they continue to do. And I have no doubt about that. I think Wendy and I both have shared that the thought is that communication up front would have been nice. And as far as, you know, the board being involved in, you know, selecting the liaison to the senior staff, it's just consistency. This is the way we did it nine months or so ago, or 10 --
But we didn't have a director then. We have a director now. I'm not fulfilling a role like you were.
So just because there's a director, you want to change? I mean, it's the same principle. He isn't --
So maybe lessons learned for the future, we could just communicate it better in the future and then discuss it.
That point's taken. You know, we'll do that. Yep. Well, and we just have to make sure we don't get our heads tied into all the stuff that's going on.
I still think right now, if you're going to serve as the liaison to the senior staff, that we as a board need to basically, you know, say, yes, Alan, we want you to do that. It's the way we did it before.
If I could raise a point, or just to make another comment. And I've come in and talked to a lot of people trying to figure out what's going on with the pool and everything and the other issue. And it seems kind of rudderless because there isn't somebody. And maybe it's my Navy background where you always know the chain of command, there's always somebody who steps in as an assistant, and we don't have that. And I think that's an error, a procedural error. I agree with Steve. I think there should be someone who's the assistant, who is in overall charge when the director is not physically able to be here and be in charge for a whole month. It's like, a couple days would be one thing, but a whole month is a long time to be rudderless and, you know, steering wildly when we have budget issues, we have personnel issues, and all the issues that are outstanding. I just think it's a long time to not have somebody who is in overall charge, especially looking and seeing what people are spending.
And seeing what people are spending. Well, Aaron checks the book and does that sort of job. And Matt is the auditor who countersigns what Aaron does, and he's here as well. So it's the director that would sit sort of looking at the administration that's missing. And that's where, yes, it is somewhat rudderless, and we have to, it'd be wonderful if he's healthy and back, but we have him, and we hired him for his talents. And what we're trying to do is see through this time, and otherwise, everyone's --
I don't have a problem with Gino. I'm just saying that procedurally, we should have, we should be ready for a time when the director is not here.
That's what we did. That's what Steve was talking about when Bill Walker left. Then we had to reject the commission. But don't you see, the problem is that the job of going in there can't be a new type of director, because then you're getting a person from here into the administrative side. It has to be a different person.
I know. I'm not saying, what should be one of the five of us? I'm saying, pick somebody that's already worked at the pool, and their other title is the assistant, and they work closely enough with Gino that it's like, when he's not there, they know what his direction would be.
My understanding in our first meeting, when I asked about that, was that Matt was doing that in the office, and Erica was seeing the stuff in the pool with her at Amadea Aquatics.
That's the problem. You have two people, and you don't have one central person that is in charge. It's just in --
Well, hopefully in a month, this will be behind us, but it may be a lesson that we can get from now on.
That's all I'm saying, is we should probably have a plan for that. It should be something we probably tell Gino, it's like, you need to pick somebody.
Steve and Wendy, I can't tell if you're talking to each other or if you're wanting to have --
This is Sean, not Steve. And I was trying to say something.
I'm laughing at his, I'm sorry, I'm laughing at his Facebook expression.
I was going to say, Steve brought up a good point, so did Donna, is that we had this problem when Craig left, we had the problem in between the interim and the, you know, between Neil and Bill, and then after Bill left. And it's something we consistently have a problem. And I think maybe going back after we review the budget. Sometime in the next couple of months, reviewing the employee handbook and looking at this would be a good thing for us.
I'm going to vote against reviewing the budget if I get a chance to vote on that.
But I think going back and looking at the employee handbook would be a good thing to do.
Yes. As an added task at some point. Okay, have we done the interim, and we've got to find, you would like to have an acting director that was designated to look after everybody that was on the staff side?
Yes. Like, the whole, that's an acting director who's responsible for everything, that includes --
Sort of the two ICs.
Yes.
Kind of like the XO.
We have this other one.
Let's break it down, man.
There you go.
There we go. You know the way that works, too. The XO always has to give the bad news. That way the CO looks great, right?
Well, hopefully, the XO won't be called upon to do that very often, but it, hopefully the director and whoever his XO is will maintain a close enough thing that the XO knows what the director wants in his absence, when he is absent. But hopefully, it'll be smooth sailing. We're not going to fire anybody. It's all going to be great.
So where do we go from here? These are board issues.
Is it all comments?
Well, we've done the, we've got the, we're sort of in the board issues with no resolution on the issue. I hear the points, and I see that we should have done more disabled this --
Well, I'll tell you, for the sake of consistency, I would like to nominate Alan McDougall to serve as a liaison to the senior staff during the director's absence.
I'll second that.
You can, I suppose.
Any questions? Any comments?
Now, is this, but the liaison, my understanding is, because he's on the, he's on the board, he's just there to liaise.
To do what I have been doing, but we're making it legitimate in Steve's frame.
In my frame of mind, because, you know, I just --
That's okay. That's okay. It can happen.
Because I'm a stickler for consistency, my friend.
Well, if anyone else would like it, I'd be delighted, but it's only at 11 o'clock on Wednesdays, and they're nice people, so I --
Don't get to me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, yeah, I guess I can't vote unless it's a tie. Okay, now, well, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Now, if we do that one, we still have, can we have Matt as the acting in the interim or the exec, whatever? Two ICs in my language, but whatever.
Either one is fine. The acting director.
That we put Matt, the acting director. He oversees a whole staff in here anyway, so that, you know, that would be a way, and it'll keep your aquatics under control in the sense that you're doing that, but he knows it. We have a problem because we have a legacy from a time when we had no director, and the senior staff all worked together as a team. And so now what we're doing is we're putting some sort of hierarchy on top of what they're comfortable with as a team.
If you don't agree, you say so. I would just, I feel more comfortable knowing there's one person in charge.
I don't like Steve being upset, and I think that if that would solve the problem and you're happy, that's fine, you know?
You know what? I did see a letter from Erica Miller. Sorry, Erica. I didn't get it from Erica. I got it from someone who works at the pool. And it was a structure that was kind of laid out during the absence. Have you guys seen it?
No.
All right. I don't know if I got it. I think I got it. You guys want to see it? Anybody want to see it?
Yes, it works.
You know, it's like, you know, like right now, it'd be nice if there was like a song because it'd be like, and have like a soundtrack. That'd be kind of cool. Can I read this?
Or just pass it around, folks?
All right, I can just pass it around. I'll just get to the meat real quick. It does lay out like a structure, and, you know, until, because what I would hesitate to do personally, this is my opinion only, as far as naming somebody right now as that go-to person, I do think whoever the director is should be a part of that discussion, my opinion. Because, yeah, and this would be something to do like a month from now, two months from now, to set something in place because, and this is not, nothing directed towards anyone, but what if you're in a case to where we put someone in as that second in command, but maybe they're not qualified? And then we've set that person up to fail, and then the district, I mean, takes another hit. I would like to go slow on that, seeing, okay?
Okay, so you're not doing anything else until the senior staff have a chance to figure out who they like.
And like I said, these are just my opinions. I have just one-fifth of a board sheet right now.
Okay, on the budget, I've got, we've got to put that in as a matter of discussion because you have a certain perception of the budget, I have a very different perception, and the workshop had a very different perception of what the budget was that they put out there. The $83,000 is based on actual expenditures in the lowest of the last five years for N-WAC. And so that's where the number comes from. It's based on past expenditures, and yes, we're going to have a different staff here. So you don't cut off what you can do with a head coach and the potential building by putting an artificially low number down for the team. And, you know, this is past practice. If you look at those, you have the documents from the workshop, the last five years budgets, and you'll see the numbers there.
I think past practices may have got us in a little trouble because if you look at some of the deficits over the past two years, and that's, you know, I know what you're saying as far as, you know, you made a comment about artificially low. I also don't want to be artificially high because in my experience, you know, you can always just, if we set it low and we realize, oh my goodness, look at this, N-WAC has doubled in three months. And then we can go in, and we can align, we can hire another coach, another assistant, whatever we have to do. But it's hard to go the other way because then you start tapping into reserves and --
We'll talk about that later. And let's put in the finances, and if we do that, I'll just put budget down beside that, so we don't lose it. Okay, public comments, three minutes. Anybody on the list? Well, you're a lot more efficient than we've been at getting to the agenda. Thank you. Okay, minutes approval. September 23rd, special meeting. Take a minute to look at it. Somebody had, you were, a name adjustment and a selection of commission --
Special meeting first?
Is that not it?
No, that's not a special meeting.
Is there any other order?
The special meeting went actually that way.
Okay. Would you move the special meeting minutes?
I would.
Yeah, good reason to move.
Okay, I move that we approve the minutes for the special meeting Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014, as written.
Okay. Is there a secondary?
Second.
Wendy. Have you had a chance to look at it?
I wasn't here, so I --
Okay. September 23rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passed unanimously. Now, for the regular meeting, October 23rd.
There are some errors. I'm sorry, Sean.
No, no, no. Tell me later.
Okay, let's have a motion, and then those are the changes.
Okay.
Will you move it?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting Thursday, October 23rd, 2014.
Thank you. Secondary.
Second.
Wendy seconds. Okay, Steve, changes.
The first error is on the voucher approval. I did not move to approve the district vouchers. I'm not sure who did, but I did not.
It must have been you, Sean, by process of elimination.
It was maybe a different guy from Indiana. It's you, Sean.
Okay. Wendy seconded it, and if Steve didn't do it, then you had to.
And then on page, it would be, well, review, email investigation request. I need to clarify something.
Please help, or are you?
Email investigation request.
Oh, thank you.
I did not recuse myself because of anything to do with the handling of an N-WAC swimmer. I recused myself from a matter concerning a, something concerning, well, I'll just say it, my daughter, Allison Hofmeyer. I was told by one NWPRD employee that another NWPRD employee had questioned her cognitive abilities openly to her and possibly to other NWPRD employees. I sent you all an email, and actually, we submitted as a family, well, actually, my wife submitted that one. It was asking for an investigation to be done. It had nothing to do with N-WAC. This never had anything to do with N-WAC. And I do not want N-WAC to be tied to it.
Would you like it to be your daughter?
How do you want me to write, chief?
Recuses himself as the matter, cases of allegations of --
Involving his daughter? Would that be good?
Allegations --
That's why I left it in the question.
Involving an NWPRD employee.
Yeah. So he wants to go just with the employment. Allegations of improper actions versus by an NWPRD --
Oh, I see an N.
And actually, you know, I have no problem with you leaving Ms. Branigan's name out as well. I mean, it's basically, this is just, yeah.
So allegations of improper, I don't want to say behavior, but --
Improper handling of a --
Handling of, handling of --
Of an EEO complaint, I guess is what it would be, right?
Yeah. By from one NWPRD employee to another.
So I have allegations of improper actions, but allegations of, I need to know what I'm changing to. I'll need to change it so you know what they are.
How about this? How about you work on it? And we approve it next month.
For one NWPRD employee and for another. Is that how you would characterize it?
Okay. What's coming in?
Why?
See, Hofmeyer rescuses himself as this matter caused a conflict of interest surrounding allegations of improper handling of an EEO complaint?
EEO.
EEO, yes. How's that?
I think that would --
And that just leaves, nobody mentioned except that the subject is mentioned.
Yeah. I would be fired, I guess. And then the last part of that is Chairman McDougall appoints subcommittee of Singleton and Woodhill to investigate incident report. I listened back to the audio of this, and actually, the only one that was appointed, and please don't take this wrong, was, would have been Ms. Singleton.
Well, yeah, because I could be.
Yeah, yeah. So this would be incorrect as well. That's the point.
I don't even remember making the subcommittee. I thought the subcommittee was --
Yeah. So I went back and actually listened to it.
What was it exactly?
It was that Commissioner Singleton was appointed to oversee the investigation, which that really gets into what oversee really means.
So it was just a subcommittee of --
To oversee investigation.
Was appointed, okay, so was appointed to oversee
Investigation.
And investigation. Okay, and the two of you are working together to do it?
Yes. I think, I think what happened at the meeting was that when Mr. Singleton and Gino were assigned to do it, and then when I saw Gino a couple days later, he said, you're it because I'm out of here, which was fine with me. Because by then I had signed and I was
I'm gonna be honest, I don't personally have a problem because I'm sure that you would do an amazing job. But it's things like that that are really, really concerning. Is that, I really wonder if Director Wolf understands his, his role and his responsibilities and where he has authority and where he doesn't. He doesn't have the authority to ask a commissioner to, to take them.
I, what I, and I probably spoke too quickly, but what, what he told me was that Mr. McDougall wanted me to do it.
Okay, well, see, now, now that even brings up another point. Because here's what happened in that meeting the other day, okay? Since this is part of the discussion, is, first of all, my understanding is, when, when we're up here discussing this, the, the community is, who is here? And that includes the director unless they're asked for input. They, they do not put their input in. When Ms. Singleton was, when, when, when it, when we were going down the road to where she would oversee this, Director Wolf interjected that who he wanted to be part of it, which I thought was kind of strange at the time, actually. But for him or you, Alan, to, to appoint somebody to assist in that, that would be going against what the board had decided at the regular board meeting in September.
Not against, it would be different. But not against. Well, the thing is that you've got, you've got Wendy as overseeing that regardless, and the question is whether somebody's working with her or not. So it's not against, but it certainly is a different thing. I'm agreeing with you. The difference is that you're not changing the board decision.
Or sure, you did. Sure, you did.
No, because Paul could be working with Wendy.
Yeah, we're working together.
Donna Sue's working with her. That's fine.
If the board votes on something and they say, this is what we want to happen.
Okay, could we use the Steve solution? And would somebody move that
We have a motion on it, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion on the floor.
On the minutes, that's right.
But I would remind you, Chairman McDougall, don't take this personal, please.
Well, well
Okay, well, I'm just letting you know. This is in the best interest of the people and what I'm trying to do is to honor the law. And, and I really want things to be done properly. And I, I think you do as well.
I'd like to amend my motion. Oops, I, I didn't want to speak to it. Good thing I didn't amend my motion.
That's okay. What, what, what was your idea?
Steve's got it.
No, we've got to amend. We are going through the changes that we'd like to make. We've got a motion and we'll move it or pass it as amended. Okay, so all of these are amendments, but it just
I think I've done them all.
Unless somebody disagrees.
Couple typos.
I don't think there's any disagreement with it. There's, what's that? Except for this one on
Steve, can I send that to you before I put it in the final?
Beautiful. Thank you, Sean.
Yes.
So the only thing is, is paragraph on appoints a subcommittee of two to investigate the incident report.
Chair of, Chair appoints, Commissioner, what I have here is Chairman McDougall appoints Commissioner Singleton to oversee an investigation and report to board at next month's meeting.
Okay. That's what it is. And then how do we clarify Donna Sue's position on the witness call? Do we have another motion?
No.
This week? Okay, well, let's prove the minutes. Are those all the amendments?
I think those are all the amendments, but I mean, if you're gonna, if you're going to distribute something after we approve them, does that kind of not defeat the purpose? I'm not trying to be difficult, but
No, that's a good point.
Okay, I mean, if, if what, if what we just talked about was the propriety of, of doing things in order, then that would be great, yeah. Yeah, I agree, so
So we're deferring this, we're taping this motion until next month.
So you either need to vote it down or you need to rescind it.
I would like to withdraw the motion to approve the minutes.
Why don't we just table it until the December meeting?
That's what we're doing.
The simplest way and then we'll bring it back up.
Look at how flexible parliamentary procedure is.
So Steve's gonna table it until next month.
I would like to table the minutes, the regular board minutes from Thursday, October twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, until the December regular board meeting, please.
You're just tabling the motion to approve the minutes until the December meeting. Okay, voucher review. Would somebody, it's in your package after the minute, after the minutes, and it's, would somebody please move the vouchers and the salary or the payroll account?
I don't know, I would. What do I say?
Oh, it's, Sean's really good at it, so you do it and Sean can say it. He's, um
I move that we approve voucher, district vouchers six four four three to six four eight three for the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred, thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. And also the M and O account to payroll of forty-two thousand, four hundred and six dollars and forty-four cents.
Is there a secondary?
Second.
Donna Sue and Wendy seconds. Okay, now, discussion of vouchers. Any questions?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
The boiler for four thousand, twelve dollars and eighty-five cents. What's up with the boiler?
Okay.
That's the gas bill for the pool boiler and the spa.
Thank you very much.
And is that, how often do we, do we pay that monthly? And that's like the normal bill?
And that's why, to tie that into something we're talking about later, that's why the environmental report that
Thank you very much.
Matt brought up last month at the meeting, he was talking about the computer overlay for that system. And Matt's been trying to move my heat.
The, the last question that I have anyway, or, or one more question I have. William Patterson unemployment, two thousand thirty-six dollars. How long will we pay unemployment?
That was just the one-time payment.
Is it? Okay. Thank you.
Any questions on the vouchers?
Um, since these, these symbols are, I think, different from what we received in our packet originally, right? Okay, no, no, it's okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to say that so that we have the opportunity to, I just want to look at them because I did look at the other ones.
These ones, yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, I just want to, you know, look at them. As I had asked before the meeting, I knew that the numbers didn't tie and I was trying to figure out why they didn't tie and it was because they weren't the right ones, which is the easiest answer.
It's this whole pack here. Yeah. And the releases are
Did you explain the vaccine reimbursement without any HIPAA violations?
We have a new employee that requested a vaccine. So the standard procedure for that is they get it, they bring us a receipt for reimbursement. Those are my catchers.
The N-WAC caps, are those something that the, the swimmers, they pay for them? So we buy them in bulk and then?
And then they get billed out to each swimmer's account.
Carolyn, I could just comment on the unemployment. And I don't want to have to hold her stuff, but I believe that Bill Patterson, he could continue to apply for unemployment until he's re-employed. And then if he's then unemployed again, we would completely be charged a percentage of, or So it's an ongoing obligation.
Okay.
So it's unpredictable, I guess, is the best way to say it.
So does, where does this get added into the budget? Does that still go?
What's
Carolyn, can you just
The unemployment insurance for Mr. Patterson.
It would be under benefits and that
Oh, did you, did you hear his statement?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay, sure. Yeah, it's good to have an HR person in the room. Even if it's not
I guess my question is
Someone knowledgeable.
If, if he did continue to claim it, where does it go when we look at the budget? Here's my question. Which we can give him that later, that's fine. Just curious more than anything.
First, team unified.
Team unified is the program that we use to run our swim team. So that does all of the billing and
I guess the real question would be where's the P and L?
That's what I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Is that a monthly?
Because it's E or something. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah. Do we know, I don't know who did the P and L, but I think to Steve's question, do we know where that expense is, where is it, where is it residing?
Would that fall under N-WAC? I guess this might point sometime.
That would fall under
I'm just trying to find the actual line here.
Shouldn't, yeah, I just wondered. That's fine. We can fix it up later.
It's sort of a mess when you get into benefits.
What was the three hundred and fifty dollar, three fifty five refund for, do you know? Like a yearly pass or something like that, or probably? Okay, yeah, that's, I thought that's probably what it was. Thank you.
Any other comments on the Okay, can we have a motion to approve vouchers, move?
We have a motion on the table.
Yes, well, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Carry it. And I just got to steal your pen.
That's okay.
All mine are red. I don't know what I've done, but
You don't want to look like you're scolding us.
Sean started down there. I was deciding on that. Okay, staff reports, yeah. You haven't got a right of a point of order, but
RCW thirty-six sixty-nine one seventy prohibits you from spending outside of revenue if your revenues do not meet what you anticipate. And the deficit in the budget
What are you talking about?
When your revenues do not meet your budget expectations, you are required to amend the budget before you continue to spend. And for instance, the two thousand dollars for
Bring it up later on because you haven't got a right of a point of order. You have no right of a point of order. You're a member of the audience.
Right.
Yes. If you have something that's really complicated, we can't answer it right now.
It's not complicated.
Sounds complicated. We're not spending money we don't have. Staff reports. Okay, N-WAC coaches' report. Any questions?
What was the primary for these reports?
Should have been the last one.
Uh, it was October.
Okay, so it's like from the first to the
First to the thirty-first.
Okay. And she has the numbers. Are these, like, each practice you, you just count the bodies in the pool and that counts, or are these all different people?
These are, we have, we have an attendance sheet that's printed out each month and they check for each day that they're there. They'll mark them as present and anyone who's added in, they'll add them in.
Okay, so, what says honored thirteen attended practices, if child A comes to practice six days a week, that counts as six?
Yes.
And just to help you, if, if I, if I may, if you look at the bronze kids, they would have, they would be able to swim four days a week. Silver's four, gold would be six.
Yeah.
The juniors and seniors end up getting into like eight or nine, I think, probably, right, because of morning practices? Or not anymore? So it's just six as well? So I mean, yeah, if that helps, yeah.
Um, the silver team numbers are not included in this. I did bring that up with Coach Kelly and asked her to include those to you guys. I don't know if she did. She did, okay, yeah, awesome.
Just, just a recommendation, I mean, just, I mean, not every, every month, but it would be nice to know how many kids. Because I know this has been brought up before. It's, because it is really hard when you look at that because, I know when you look at gold, it does say seven, seven members. Oh, it's been modified. Cool, like, the first sheet I had, it really didn't have the amount of kids. Cool, I'm glad, thank you. Because the first one I had was like, wow, I don't know how many kids that is. Thank you.
That was brought to my attention that that was not
Cool, yeah, thank you.
The, um, they finished, they said they attended the fall thunderbird swimming, finished third out of, don't really know how many teams there was.
Seven, no, three.
So, so if you had a three, doesn't count that. Great, but I guess as long as there weren't any.
Is it too, is it too ambitious to ask that we also receive some sort of forecast? Not numbers, but here's what's going on in the fall, in the next month? That would be, it would be helpful to me, and I know we're still on N-WAC, but my eye goes down to the fitness club and apparently we had a fun run.
Why don't we do the fitness club as well? Just keep
Sure, okay, sorry, I didn't mean to segue if anyone still wants to talk about N-WAC, but I, I just, I think it would be extremely helpful to do that for all the programs in terms of if there are scheduled events, if there are upcoming some things, it would be, it would be really helpful to know those things. I, I would love to be an advocate and a cheerleader for, for all of these programs, but I can't, I certainly can't do that if I have, I don't know. Thank you so much.
I find the N-WAC report really confusing too, in a way, I think. It might be nice to know how many human beings there are as against human being attendance times.
Yes.
If that makes sense. Anything on the aerobics?
Do we, sorry, do we know what PE members is?
I saw that.
Sorry, okay, that's, I was like, I'm like, no, is that a number? Is that a number?
Non-comprehensible.
Is that part of pi, three point one four?
Thirty-one point four, okay.
They changed that.
No, they didn't change it.
I don't have a P because this is my
I had heard it was the largest group, so
Bronze is the largest group, yes.
Thanks.
This is the one they emailed us the other day.
Oh, I see, yeah.
And this is the one I marked up, which is last year.
Okay, aquatics program, any questions, Ellen?
I did send you guys my
The one, a num, number adjustment?
My number adjustment, yes.
That's okay.
Please go down when I type it, Karen.
Facilities and maintenance? Oh, sorry, Sean?
I have something positive about aquatics. I don't know if anybody knows, this is last month, there was a there was an incident with the police in this area and they actually blocked off the streets around the pool, tire station, the middle school, and it was on a weekend. And there was a possible shooter in the area and who was the scene, Matt? There was a scene, there was a senior guard on that day. I'll let you name names if you want. But I happened to be working, so I was aware of it. And I got texts that told me what was going on and the staff here handled themselves exemplary and looked out for the safety of all the people in the pool.
That was Amber's discussion. She did a great job.
Will you say thank you on behalf of board?
What happened to the pool the other day? This Facebook thing went out, I think it was, pool? Oh, is that, was that it? No, that was something different. No, this was a maintenance issue.
Our, our, like, pool, pool, like, pool issues, we have
Okay, cool, yeah, because it was like, pool's closed, pool's open, yay, it was like, wow.
No, we were down for about, we had hours.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Facilities and maintenance? And attendance, any comments, questions, or not? We have an employee of the month nomination of Matt Morris for October two thousand fourteen. During the last couple of months, we experienced mechanical challenges which caused our pump to stop functioning properly. Matt worked diligently to get the pump and our electrical panels to cooperate, but still faced some issues. Realizing the solution, getting our new pump installed with minimal loss of revenue, Matt worked round the clock to remove the backup pump and install our new pump. He followed through, making sure all parts of the operation were on site and that he had the help he needed to make sure we were back up and running. Because of Matt's diligence and dedication, our downtime was less than twenty-four hours when we were back at full operation. This is just an example of how hard Matt works on a consistent basis to keep our facility running the best it can. He's worked tirelessly with our energy audit personnel working to see us through to the next stage. Thank you, Matt, for all your hard work. And so that's the employee of the month.
You betcha, absolutely. Yeah, and I was gonna say on the health department thing, I think you were involved in that too, so I, I just say Yeah, no, that's, that's great, that's, that's, yay, good. Yay, even if that's a basic or expected thing, good.
That'll be out there as well.
Excellent, good, and I like the, I like the numbers, I like the, I like the update. It looks nice.
If I could say something about it, I tried to tie the attendance to specific events. And on this attendance report, those are actually physical bodies that were here. The way that the numbers were being run, some of them were punch cards that we had sold for future attendance, not necessarily used in a lot. So with this format, everything is consistent for every category. It's people that were physically here.
And that's why you didn't do the comparator?
That's why I don't have a comparator because I believe there's no way to do it.
Perfect, okay, thank you. That's very interesting.
I think it's great.
And you keep doing that, then?
Yes. It's a little more time-consuming, but I think it's going to give us information that's more useful in the future.
Well done. Okay, unfinished business, energy audit.
Your member 17th, you're supposed to find out if you had, if you got a drink. Has anybody heard from Mark Foster? I haven't still got him.
No news on the ground. Is that, is that...
So who will, will you hear from him? Will Gino hear from him? Both of you, who will, who?
I'm sorry.
Will you, will you hear from him? Is that, oh, okay, okay.
Yes, I will contact him tomorrow.
Okay. Do you have some?
We have his number, yeah.
Okay, um, we're now down to new business. And under new business, we have a fairly heavy agenda. Most of it's in administrative session by paragraphs I, I, and G. The one item that we've moved ahead from the beginning of the week was the director's update on hedge coach, head coach and possible contract. And Sean, you were on the advisory committee, so I turn it over to you on that.
The, uh, director, um, I don't have it, but...
Contract's that file right there.
Okay, the director took the, uh, and the committee got together and we had interviews, and Gillian was there as a senior swimmer. Thank you very much. Miss Page, you did a wonderful job. Uh, Lisa was there, and Dan Brown is actually there, but initially gonna be Dawn, and she couldn't make it because of a run she went to do in Sedan, made it twice. Narrowed the field down to two, and had interviews with both, and then both members came out to meet with, uh, both final, uh, applicants came out to meet with Gino and, uh, met with Lisa and also Dan, and booked two separate days, obviously not in the same time. And after meeting with both and interviewing both, the director wanted to, um, talk to Mr. Dick Taylor, and wanted to make a, um, offer to him to come and be our new head coach. Dick, I don't know, read this because... Dick comes from, uh, comes to us currently from Indiana. And, uh, yeah, I was gonna say, somebody else had glasses on, you can read this later than I am, but, um... Um, Dick comes to us, do not take a picture of the pool. Dick comes to us from Indiana, uh, and he comes from the Southridge Aquatic Raiders currently, where he's been with them for, um, a year and a half, not quite two years. And he's moved around that area, head coach, very progressive ideas, gelled well with, um, swimmers, thank you, man. And with the staff, when he met them, they both did, um, they're both, uh, both of them were highly liked by all members of the board. And, uh, Gino decided on moving...
And when you say the board, you mean the selection committee?
The selection committee, thank you, for the correction. Yes, for the selection committee, um, and Gino, they all made our recommendations, and Gino made the final, um, one, some, recommendation tonight, which is to enter into a contract with Mr. Richard Taylor. And here is the contract, so. I am that over on behalf of the director and search committee to the board.
And can we have a motion to accept the recommendation or reject the recommendation of the director? Would you move that we accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the director.
Okay, would there be a seconded for that?
Second.
Okay, Wendy seconded. All in favor?
Well, is there, sorry, I seconded based on the expectation of discussion. Absolutely.
I was nice and quiet for a second.
Absolutely, well, that's, I, seeing this, you know, trying to kinda take all this in, I, I think my, my questions are, are really about the, um, the contract itself. And is, eh, not having seen prior, previous ones, I'd really like to understand, is this, is this a boilerplate?
Yes.
Um, okay, um, and so it is similar to?
Bill Patterson.
Okay. There's, there are copies of it right there, sorry.
Is there another copy? So I don't have to look over again. I mean, I don't mind. I, I think you're awesome.
Well, thanks. I think you're pretty great.
Thanks. You know, it's funny, I went in there, made a copy of it, and I think I put it, put it, yeah, I think that's what I did.
Maybe it's still there on there. And so the, the term of, of four years, um, that's, that's, that was in previous ones as well? So the agreement is for four years?
Unless terminated or modified as provided, yeah.
Okay. Well, right, but, I mean, that's, it's, it's kind of the, you know, you either kind of go with one or you go with the other, because it either means something or it means nothing. And I'm not trying to be existential about that. I, I, I think... That, that I think we're, we're, we're saying that our intention is, is a, is four years of employment, absolutely.
I guess so.
Okay. Do we have a good understanding? I, just, these things bring up questions just in terms of overall policies and procedures for me. Um, do we have a definition of, so it, it says in part G, sorry, let me be specific, um, employment termination, yes, we can, we can read along together. Part G, um, let's see, I guess technically, third paragraph, first sentence, "The district may terminate the employee at any time without advance notice for good cause." Do we have a definition, and perhaps it's irrelevant to this particular, um, candidate, but do we have a definition for what good cause is?
I think it's covered under, um, state WAC and RCW, and I'm gonna actually defer to the employee's authority. Uh, but there is actually a definition of what...
It can have it in your employee handbook.
Okay.
Like, specific behavior, and I think there was constant understanding of good causes under the law.
Okay.
So...
So that would, for me, and, and that's kind of what, I think that was my, the expected answer. I think it would just be then specifically, have we defined it? And if we haven't, we, we may like to, but again, that, I don't, I don't mean to, to make that, take that away from this, um, candidate.
When you candidate in a, in a contract with specific deliverables or evaluation periods, you know, nine days, six months, you know, we anticipate that these are the, you know, whether it's, uh, you know, numbers of, of team, whatever it may be, we anticipate these are the, that's what we expect to see.
There's nothing in the individual thing, so that might be something we look at as amendment to the employee handbook.
Yeah, and I think, I think just in a general, as a general definition, but I, I think, to, and thank, thank you for that. Um, I, I think we may want to look at, cause I am, I'm trying to see if I'm missing this somewhere when it talks about evaluation. So, for example, it just, it just says, hey, you know what, this guy gets a raise, and I'm, I'm not sure that I just blanketly agree with that. I, I, I think we might want to be, to have somewhere here what that evaluation process is, and if it's in the employee handbook, that's great, but it probably needs, should be referenced here somewhere, right? I would think.
Yeah, the, they should say, you know, some, like, this is, this is all in accordance with, or things will be governed in accordance with the employee handbook.
Yeah, well, also under the bylaws of the Article 4, which has a set of things here.
But that's, that's for the director?
Yes, but the director would be the entire supervisor, and also that, I'm just trying to see if there's anything in it on evaluation.
I mean, I, I wanna move forward as much as the next person. I just feel like there are things that we can do to have a better understanding of, of...
Couldn't we change the contract, when the employee shall receive a 3% annual salary increase? Do you have the, can you grab the employee handbooks and make sure we...
I hear it's employee hand...
Thank you. I'm not sure what we're on for.
And it's actually in a smaller font.
It's even smaller, yeah.
But as a contract, you can write that.
I think if you looked at Bill Walker's contract, and that's the only one that's coming to my mind, not Bill Patterson, because I can't remember what it said. It basically said, I mean, it didn't say eligible for a 3% raise, but that's kinda where it was going. You know, that if we determine at the end of a year, yeah, you, you were awesome, you know, you're, and we could give that 3% raise, but the wording, you didn't have to give the 3% raise.
I think it was part of the...
It sounds will be reviewed annually with the department.
Yeah.
Right.
Something like that. But I think that's what Bill's contract said something to that effect.
What would you like, Sean?
What's it say about annual... And does that apply to contract?
That's a good point.
He's gonna receive a 3% annual increase for each additional year. Is that after the first four years, or?
Well, no, I think that's annual.
I know, but it says for each additional year, and so is that additional year after the four, or every additional year? Cause that's not playing to me, and if it's not playing to me, I don't want it to play.
No, you're right.
That's a good point.
Four-year contract means 3% for each additional year.
So that means it stays on?
Stays on for five years. Is there 3% tax?
That's what it sounds like to me. Because otherwise, an additional year from what? It has to be from four years. Yeah, so, um, that's what I'd say. But I don't know, like, so he negotiated that with...
Something we need clarification of?
Yeah.
I'm waiting on you, Wendy.
Oh, for, for what?
I'm waiting on you, cause I've got a couple of questions.
Oh, okay, well, right.
But I'm waiting. I'm waiting for you.
And we, so what we're getting into here, I think are really important policy things, but our job is either to accept it or reject it.
Okay, all right, I can vote.
Except there, but I think that there's some really important points here that should be, uh, fixed, um, when we're taking a look at other contracts. You know, that's, it's just that what we have in our bylaws is, is we just accept or reject a, a recommendation.
So are we discussing this right now?
Well, we're not, if we take it apart, we're taking it apart for, for future application, but, uh, the, the motion has to be to accept or reject the contract. That's it.
And are we allowed to discuss what we, why we think one way or the other?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
One of the concerns I have would be moving expenses. I don't know where you put that in the budget. And then the $47,000, the only concern I have, going back to that budget again, is the fact that this year, we took in $40,000 for N WAC, the Masters, and the swim meet.
So what are you suggesting as it relates to this contract?
I'm saying that we really need to look at the budget before we get, we extend someone a contract that's, that takes us outside of the budget. Because you can look at it, and think, okay, the way we sit right now this year, we would not have taken enough money in N WAC to pay for his salary, for his salary and his benefits. We would already be behind.
Okay, so your suggestion, I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep, make, make sure that we do keep on track regardless, but your suggestion is that, you're, rather, your concern with this contract is that you believe that it's contingent upon the budget?
Yes, I do.
You will not get this coach or a coach of this quality unless you pay that type of money.
And my concern right now, Alan, is to be fiscally responsible, and that is what I'm trying to do. And Alan, let me, look, I just have to say this. You, you are one-fifth as this board as well as I am. I have my thoughts. You do not have to attack me when I, when I share them. I just want you to know that. I am trying to be respectful of you. Please extend that respect back to me, please.
Are there any other?
I, I think is it, so personally, as it relates to, um, salary, um, I agree with the moving expenses not having any definition to it. Um, I think that's, I, I think it should have a bit more definition to it. Um, and I think, um, some, some measure of, of mention of reviews and potentially a probation period, um, and, and maybe that's not in order, but those are, those are the reasons why, those are the concerns I have about this contract.
You know, maybe this, you know, when you look at that budget, if you could expand the role of a, of a coach to where it's more than just the head coach, is, is that a thought you guys have ever, ever looked at? To where maybe they're not just the head coach, maybe there's something else here at the pool that they, they helped, where it's basically dual responsibilities, to where, you know, to be creative with some of that. Sean, what do you think?
I think there's definitely, I think there's two things. Definitely some merit to that, a lot of merit to it.
Yeah.
Whether it's head coach and something to do overseeing aquatics, or, you know, a mirror, that's a lot for one person to take on. If I look at head coaches in the past, and I'll go back to the alumni, I know how much time that man's spent on the deck. I don't know if he could've found time to do something else.
That's true. That is definitely true.
So if you get somebody like that, and, and, and so you'd have to be clear with the parameters. I also go back to something else we're gonna talk about tonight, and that's Andy King.
Yeah.
I know, and Andy King was here, I believe, was head coach and director. I wasn't here, that was ten, twelve years ago, and that led to all kinds of problems.
Yeah.
So we have to be very careful to expand that position.
I, and I take...
But I think there are ways to be creative with it. Looking at this, I think there's a lot of questions about the, um, contract, though, the director's here. So I know it can be... I, I can tell you this much, having interviewed both, that dude's a great, great, uh, great interview.
Sure is.
Both of them came out well, so... That part was good.
Time for the question. Any more comments? All in favor of accepting the recommendation of the director?
With this contract, or?
Well, accepting the, all we have to do is accept the recommendation to the director, that's what the motion is.
But effectively, we're approving the contract?
Effectively, unless there's something that we've done chatting to...
Can we call the director and see if he's willing to amend the contract?
If you wish. Um, it seems to me that we have a choice, so only to accept or to reject it, that's what the bylaws say.
Okay, well, that, that's fine, that's what the bylaws say, and, you know, basically.
Those in favor of accepting the contract? Or accepting the recommendation, I'm sorry, I'm getting stuck doing it now. Those, um, in favor of accepting the recommendation of the director and... Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all opposed? Okay, we'll have to have a special meeting, because the person was going to come before the next meeting. He's willing to take the job at the time of the meeting.
Well, I would say we need to call the director and have him look at this contract and make the changes as per your notes, and get back with us.
I can be free any day, so, whatever day it takes.
I mean, and, and we're, we're making, based on our feedback, we would be willing, we will review it based on updates to the contract, but, I mean, we're not telling him the changes to make, right? That's the, we either approve it or we reject it. We've made suggestions. Is that fair? Okay.
Can we make sure that he gets told what the suggestions were that were made?
We're actually recording this.
But why don't you have the list so that we...
Erin, have you been taking notes? Did you talk to Gino about this, please?
I mean, contract negotiations are a ripper of life, right?
Well, the problem is that the process had the negotiations with the candidates, and so the negotiations are done, and we have a draft contract that's signed by the two parties, which we are supposed to accept or reject, and we have rejected it, so now, um...
You've had a candidate sign it?
Yes. Yes?
What?
I haven't, I haven't seen it, but that's my understanding.
Oh, yeah, it's on the back page.
What?
Go ahead, Erin.
Are we supposed to approve, or, my, my question here is, we're supposed to approve the contract before the stand? If the contract...
This is because you have a director that really, he doesn't...
Okay, we can talk about that in executive session, Bill. The contract signed?
Question would be if Gino has the authority to have the contract signed, and the candidate could have, could have an offer extended without the contract? You know, essentially, these are the terms generally, and then the candidate has the ability to negotiate, whatever, you know, whether it's form of location or whatever.
So does that mean, I mean, I know Gino has the higher authority, because he has the authority to permit?
What does, what does the resolution say about contracts?
Judy said the director had general... Judies of the director to have general supervision over the administrative affairs of the district, be to appoint and remove at any time employees of the district at his or her discretion, as the law policies of the district and the circumstances may indicate.
There's a resolution that we passed.
Yes, we passed the resolution, which was to put a caveat on that, to say that we had to accept or reject recommendations of the director for the head coach.
But he didn't bring a recommendation before the board, before he terminated employee, and Alan, he didn't bring a recommendation to us before he tried to hire an employee.
Have you ever signed a resolution to pass the change of the resolution?
Do you have the resolution, whatever it was, in the amendment to the bylaws, in your bylaws? I haven't gotten it, because I'm so happy.
Well, it depends on whether, so, back to Karen's point, it depends on whether he has the authority.
Yes, authority to hire and fire.
Did you not make the?
This is engaging in a contract. This is beyond hire, engaging in a contract, whether there's a cost threshold or whatever, there's, there's some aspects to that that require a little trust in nature.
Approval. Yeah, review and approval.
But in terms of your credibility with the candidate, I mean, I think protecting that, you know, it's the interest is to retain Mr. Taylor, is that what his name is? Then, you know.
Well, but, but listen to what we're, listen to what you're saying. I mean, but there, there's possibly, so I, hopefully, I'm going in the same direction that you are, which is, which is perhaps we can look at amending it, and he would be agreeable to that.
Okay.
I, I realize some of the things here, I mean, I think we may have to pick and choose.
Yes.
Right? But it. I, I, I think we ought not just say, never mind. I think that's the point. Or at least, for me, that's the point, is not just to go like, oh, well, whatever. Like, no, I, I think we need to do our best effort to, one, fix the situation to the best of our ability to make, to all, all parties happy, and then ensure that we put whatever in place to ensure that it doesn't happen again, if, if in fact, things were out of order.
This is the second meeting I've heard this, the, the change to the bylaws being brought up, and everyone kind of shrugging their shoulders. Was the change made to the bylaws?
Yes.
So why is it not?
The bylaws haven't been updated, is the, is the problem. We have the resolutions, we've got through them last year, we see them. We had a fuss about it with Bill Patterson's contract, because the head coach's contract was not brought to the commission at all. And we said that the, we wanted those things approved by the commission, and this is the second time around, and we haven't done much better.
So, so if it is, if that is one of our bylaws, then that's not work, since it wasn't brought, the contract wasn't brought to the board in advance, I would say he didn't have the authority to sign. I say there's, well, say there's also a answer to your question, and then send Nathan to look at it. Is that a way to go?
Yeah.
The question is, and you were on the advisory committee, I'm sitting, I wasn't involved on this, though, but I'm.
Well, we, we, obviously, as Karen said, if it's signed, it's.
Well, you have, there's a twofold problem. You have your legal problem, potentially engaging in something, and whether you made a commitment, that is beyond what you want to make a commitment to. Second piece is, is if you want to retain this candidate as somebody who's a viable coach, the, the credibility or the, you know, him moving out here, he would, of course, want to know that, that Gino was, had your full support, that he, all of his ducks were in a row, that your respective ducks were in a row, so, you know, a lot of finger pointing isn't going to make this pool look any better than it does. So, so I think it's a twofold issue that you're facing. I think there's a lot of room in that contract, a lot of those things, and, you know, contracts are very complicated, especially employment agreements. So, some, I'm not sure where that boilerplate came from, but if it was handed to Gino and said, here, use this, perhaps that was the case, I don't know. Nobody's eyes have been on it, who has the knowledge to really understand how to, to build a contract that's going to be meaningful for the district as well as for the personal engagement.
And, so, in the same duties of the director, just, again, just to put information out there, point L, the director shall by insurance bond be authorized to expense up to $50,000 without board resolution or signatures. And if we, if I understand that correctly, if we look at that, effectively, we've, we've entered into a contract of $188,000 commitment over a four-year period. So, I mean, that, and again, it's not to try to set things out of order.
Or it's under $50,000 a year.
With.
Moving expenses will put that well over.
As, as well as benefits. As well as benefits. So, but I, I completely agree with the point that we should try to find the best resolution to this, and, and perhaps if we feel that everything is, for example, in the employee manual, perhaps it's simply modifying it to reference that or other documents that already exist, which I think is completely reasonable.
I don't want the coach to think we don't want.
Absolutely not.
He sounds awesome.
Absolutely not.
If I just jump in here. Just because I hear the parents are waiting to decide right now whether to jump ship or not, to pull their kids from this program. You guys know, just by looking at the numbers, that our numbers right now are at the bottom of the barrel, and they are dropping every week. They, if we, you know, they're staying contingent on you guys figuring out a way, and I, I completely understand what's going on here, I mean, numbers, budget, all that other stuff. We got to try and get, we're going to lose probably the rest of this team, because what's we've got going on right now isn't working. That's why we have the numbers leaving constantly. The numbers that we've gained back right now are some of the high school kids that have come back, but we have people leaving this team every week.
And, and I don't think that there's anybody sitting up here who doesn't feel that sense of urgency. I, I could be wrong. I think everybody feels that sense of urgency. I think what we're trying to do is ensure that, for me, if nothing else, the expectations of this person are clear, right?
Right.
I, I think, I think that, that we're trying to look at, at least from our own perspectives, to try to move forward and improve how this operates, and to me, that set of expectations is really important in doing that, and, and as well, that we're clarifying any, you know, that we're not overspending on things like moving expenses, that we're not. So, so I think we're trying to do all of the above.
And I think, and I think that's only the wise thing to do. I'm just saying, the parents are expecting, hoping that we, that we, they have some good news soon, because they're, they're right there. A lot of them are just right there. Right now, it's our senior staff telling them, just hang on.
Ms. Pape, Jillian, I would like to say thank you for all your hard work you've done, and, and I know it's been a hard thing, and watching adults do all this is probably very, ah, but I just want you to know, you know, you're, you're awesome, and you giving your time.
Yeah, we appreciate your help.
For this process, it's, it's appreciated very much, and I think I speak for all of us. Thank you for, for everything.
So, you see, what is happening? You guys have decided that you're going to talk to Gino, or Sean, are you going to do this? Or we should have one person that's going to take whatever concerns they are on this, this contract, or whatever we want to call it, so that we can get it fixed easily quickly and have a special meeting to get it approved.
I would like to nominate Wendy Singleton. Sorry, Wendy, to, to discuss this with Gino. I have, you're awesome.
Is that okay? You understand what's going on?
Sure, that's fine, sure.
Okay, is that acceptable to the rest of you? So we have Wendy Singleton appointed to talk to Gino and to get a draft of this contract within days, and we'll have a special meeting as soon as possible. Okay? Are there any days that are not possible for people to have meetings?
Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and next week. Monday, Tuesday, Friday, and next week. I work all three weeks.
Yeah, we have Thanksgiving coming up this week, so we want to get it before Thanksgiving is possible.
Only one, you know, me and all of us here. That's all I'm saying. I work Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, and next week I cannot take time off.
Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, so you can come on Wednesday. So if you get the job done, we'll have a special meeting on Wednesday, if that's good with everybody else.
With no pressure.
Wednesday works for you?
Sure.
Wendy, Steve?
That's fine, pretty.
Okay, so we'll try for next Wednesday for a special meeting. The only item on the agenda will be whatever happens, and if there's no adjustment on the contract, then there won't be any meeting.
And I don't know what all you're going to take to him, all those moving expenses, another question I have. I mean, if, if we paid any moving expenses at all, because the thing that jumps out at me is moving expenses. How much stuff does this guy have? I mean, and do you put a limit on it, right? I mean, because, you know, I know when I moved out here with the government for, for two years, they moved 500 pounds of my stuff or something like that. And it got my TV and a few, few things. Do you know what I'm saying? There has to be some idea, because some moving expenses are $10,000, $15,000, man, I mean, or more. There's no possible way we could afford.
They were, they were $20,000 to move me across country.
Okay, well, you'll look into that with them and come up with something rather, hopefully, and by next Wednesday, we can have a special meeting on that. Okay, we've got to go into an executive session, and it's going to be even worse. So, I guess it'll probably take half an hour.
Give them a minute, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
We can't, if we, if we say it's a half an hour, we cannot come out before a half an hour is over.
It'll be half an hour. And it may be more, but I'll come back and tell you.
We can go over, we just can't go under.
Can I take, I mean, a little recess?
In fact, if I could just make a quick statement on the budget, because we've had it brought up so much tonight, I just want to say what's happening this year, because I'm getting a little tired of some of the references. As of November 19th, the staff have done a tremendous job on cutting expenditures this year, and I'd like the public to know that. We're $75,000 under the budget estimates on expenditures, okay? That's pretty significant. Our participation revenue is $120,000 below what we expected, okay? So we're in big trouble still financially, and it's a huge wallop across the board. The levy is $30,000 in our budget figures, the ones you've got there tonight. You'll see that we're still owed $30,000 on the levy, okay, from the amount that we've got, which means that we have $90,000, if you want, deficit at the moment, okay, in total. But then you subtract the $75,000 from that, we're only $15,000 below what we were expecting to be, in the sense of budget, if we're balancing the budget. The pump cost us $46,000, okay? The pump changes and the repeated ones, that whole five set of crises that we've had, and we have $5,000 beyond our budget for medical insurance, like everybody else in this country, so we're trying to adapt to it. And so what we're doing is we're coming close to balancing the budget this year with those things included. That's what I want you to see. Yes, Vicki, we are.
What I'm looking at here is if I take your revenue that has come in, and I take the expenses and offset them against, and I'm not looking at the projected, what you projected, what you budgeted.
Yeah.
I'm saying if you take what is coming as revenue, and you take out what you expended off the door, you have overspent.
No, we haven't, because if it was $260,000 that they didn't put in from the county, it's in there this time.
So that we understand what you're seeing. What you have on here.
Do you have the numbers right there from the screen?
I have the numbers right here.
Okay.
If you take your total revenue.
Yes.
And then you look at your total expenditures.
Yes.
You are over, over what you have taken in revenue.
We better not be.
That's what.
Didn't say they work that way for me when I went through.
I understand, but you're, but you're bumping your numbers up against what you projected for the budget. I'm saying, I'm looking at your revenue, your hard revenue that has come in, and I'm looking at your expenditures, that what you said you have spent, you have overspent already your, your, your levy money that you have on you.
We have, are you including the program revenues as well? Because if you look at the summer, we'll look at the.
Versus actual, and it doesn't include your November checks, vouchers.
It doesn't include, I know that, but that's $200,000 that we got in revenue.
I understand that.
Okay.
But what's on here includes more money spent than you took.
I disagree with you on our financial standing.
I'm saying this is what your budget versus actual says. This is not what I'm saying. I'm looking at the numbers.
Okay, well, anyways, we've, I've told you what's happening, and you're welcome to do whatever you want with it.
No, I'm not asking you.
From here to November.
From January, so it's from.
From January 1st to here.
Since you broke.
I'm just saying, take your total.
I have.
But I'm not the budget part.
I'm taking my.
I know that.
But then.
Hold on.
I said I need to.
You gotta go.
But I disagree with you.
Well, hey, whoa, 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 this discussion.
We're going into executive session.
But what I'm asking is, is how do the public know that you have enough money to cover your expenses?
We'll get back to this.
Well, maybe you will.
I don't think so. That was a very bizarre moment.
Are we in recess?
I don't know.
We're just pausing for a minute, and then we're going into executive session.
Okay. So we're in a recess, then you can go to the executive session. We're going to executive session for 30 minutes. We're in recess.
Are you guys, do you think we're crazy a little bit, nine?
I can't actually say.
This is one of the stuff that we're talking about. Is all of this.
It's a little private. And that's anything important that you're speaking about. But then.
Alan, I actually have a question for you tonight, so I'm wondering if this one's happening now, because it's an executive session.
I hope not. I, I don't know, I don't think, I think there's not a big topic except for, I'm pretty sure that we're going to have to go through. Let's take a look. Probably comments are, it's just the, the, that I think is just a good thing for the whole mess. That's performance evaluation.
One question. Do we stop this?
Yes.